I know, I felt like, yeah.
Okay, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting of September 11th, 2023. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Will you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming, and we honor our nation's first responders today on the anniversary of 9/11. We had a very nice ceremony at our firehouse and remembering all those people. So I hope everybody remembers them and their thoughts and prayers. First, we have public comments scheduled and non-scheduled. Is there anybody who would like to speak tonight? Brian, is there anybody?
Yes, there is one caller.
Okay, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. It's Jane Turner.
Ms. Turner, welcome tonight. Sorry we had trouble last week, last time.
Well, I hope we figured out the technical difficulties.
Sounds like we have.
But I just wanted to bring up that when you were talking about redoing Parkdale, it appeared that it ended in the middle of my driveway.
Okay.
I would like to know why. Back when Johnson was the manager, he did the same thing then. Now, we have since taken over the rest of Parkdale to Letica for maintenance. So I would like to know why my front street is being ignored.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have no idea. So we'll certainly look into it. And I'm sure it's all about boundaries where certain cutoff points are, but we'll certainly look into it.
We will get back to you.
Before.
What's that?
You'll look into it before it's going to be done?
Correct.
Yes, yes, yes. We will get with you and try to figure out what that was.
Okay, and one other quick question. I know they were going to do something with the water tower this fall. When is that supposed to be?
City Manager?
Yep, I think it's like the third week of September, maybe pushed out to the first week of October. So mostly interior things, but we will give notice when we do that as an adjacent neighbor.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anything further? Next is the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is the Knights of Columbus fundraising event. And the second is Club Scout Pack 188 Soapbox Derby special event.
Motion to approve A, and I'd like to just discuss B.
Okay, there's a motion.
Support.
For A, motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I just wanted to say how awesome I thought it was that they brought this back this year because I know we had a few years off and it's really an incredible event. So thank you to them and we look forward to hopefully having some press too out there for them to make acknowledgements. So motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support. Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. No old business or table items tonight. Next is a public hearing. It's a public hearing for the granary, 303 East University, a special project and site plan review. Mr. City Manager, would you like to?
I can lead in. We're trying to make sure Vidya's lined in here and her and Brian are trying to get her to control the computer so we can do the presentation. There's two items that we're taking together tonight, both public hearings for the granary. The granary is redevelopment of the elevator site, the former elevator site. It's not a secret that people drive by, they see the work that was done. That work was done on a separate path. The city of Rochester got a grant for $1 million from Eagle to clean up the site. The cleanup of the site was to remove all the existing structures on the property that were not going to remain. So the white building that was there, all the temporary sheds, and then the portion of the elevator that was to remain obviously stayed and they have shored that up to make sure it's safe so it doesn't get blown over in the wind. So the basic above-ground cleanup is going on. There's still a lot to do. If this is approved this evening, they will immediately start the underground. It's bad soil and then at the south end of the property, it's the remnants of the bad stuff that we knew from ReWalt's property, the HTT, the Higbee, bad stuff in the ground that goes through that iron wall next to the creek. So it migrated a little bit north, so not a lot of that's there. This was more debris, asbestos, bad stuff in the dirt from years of the elevator and there was a lawn mower repair shop in there, petrochemicals, things like that. So that would be the next step is they will probably take the whole winter to clean that site up, again minimizing the disturbance of the ground. So you cut things in trenches, you don't just dig it all out. If you dug it all out, it would be $9 million. So they are working on that next. So tonight, two things have to happen. If we remember back from our planning meeting, we had a glitch on our system on the master plan about the special projects boundary. So remember we talked about, we had two instances where there were problems. The elevator was one of them. So Planning Commission went back through the study, they made a recommendation. We had public hearings there. We got great notification, didn't get a lot of participation, but that was to actually take that boundary, the special projects boundary, because it's adjacent to an existing special projects boundary. And ordinance allows us to modify it for the same. Why spit? Excuse me if I'm TV. I just got caps fixed up tonight, so I'm trying not to spit. So I apologize. Anybody on TV, I don't mean to apologize. I don't want to embarrass you. Sorry about that. So I'm trying to go clearly.
I was wondering what was going on there.
Yeah, I know. I'm kind of mumbling and spitting and I am sorry. I'm gonna let Vidya.
We can bring back those shields from COVID.
Yeah, the COVID shield.
Jeff's kind of sliding back. I apologize. Anyway, so we got that through the Planning Commission. They recommended to the council to amend the boundary to just take in the parcels that define the actual elevator site. So it was two parcels, split zoning. We didn't care about the zoning so much. It was more the boundary that we worried about that had to be amended so that the entire project could be heard as a special project. The second part is it's a special project and site plan review. Again, Planning Commission went through many meetings on this, great detail. You all should have got packages delivered to your homes. It's pretty thick. Mosheri did a wonderful job and the architect. I've done Dominic Tringali, I've done a wonderful job in details. I see Tiffany Deserment in our audience here. I know that they reached out to the historic folks to try to get as much information and I don't want to steal their thunder so they can talk about what the goal is and what the project plan is for what's left of the elevators as part of this project. But I'm proud to say that, and I think we all did a double take when Mr. Mosheri came in that this is only 30 units. We have other sites in town that on this size would look for 40, 50, 60, 80.
Hundred.
Units, 100 units exactly. So this is 30 units. They're live work and again, I'll let Dominic go over that part of their presentation. But Vidya, are you able to get your screen shared yet?
Yes.
Awesome. Vidya Krishnan, our planner for McKenna, planner's extraordinary. Yep.
Welcome Vidya, and I guess so you're gonna give a presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll go over the details of the project so the council can familiarize itself. The request before you is from Dominic Mosheri to construct a multiple-family residential project with a total of 30 units in three buildings. It is located on the southeast corner of Water Street and East University Drive and is a split-zone property like Mr. Banda mentioned. If you look at this line across your screen, that is the split-zone line. The northeast portion of the site is zone B1, which is commercial, and the southwest portion of it is zone I1, which is industrial one district. Now, neither of these districts permits residential uses. So the applicant is seeking special projects approval, which is a unique tool in the city of Rochester's zoning ordinance that allows for flexibility in design of site in order to get the best project possible for a site while providing measurable public benefit. As Mr. Banda mentioned, the project has been before the Planning Commission, first for a preliminary review on July 6th, and subsequently they made revisions to the plan and they reappeared before the Planning Commission for a public hearing on August 7th, at which time they received a recommendation for approval of not just the special projects site plan, but also for extending this boundary to pick up this entire parcel within the special projects area. Now, with regard to the use, as I mentioned, there are three buildings. Building one has got 13 units, building two has six, and building three has 11 units. Building three is townhouses, while these two are multiple-family residential live-work spaces. One of the conditions that the Planning Commission placed on this project was that as a part of the lease agreement, the applicant has to ensure that none of these live-work units are converted to a commercial use. They are strictly residential and can have individual home occupation type businesses, but they are not to convert into a commercial use, which would be similar to what we would typically allow in the downtown. With regard to the setbacks, since this is at the present time I1, the required setback is 25 feet, proposed setback is 15 feet. The B1 portion required setback is 15 feet, proposed setback is 10 feet, and the applicant is seeking a deviation under the special projects umbrella for these two setbacks. Vehicle access was a significant point of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting. The site at this time includes one access drive of Water Street and a two-way access drive of East University. We had concerns about the proximity of this access drive to the intersection and causing any issues. So the applicant did work with the city's engineer, A. W., and based upon that, this design with a little eyebrow island in the middle to ensure the traffic is only right turn in and right turn out to prevent vehicles from stacking or backing up onto Water Street. One of the requirements for any special project or any project of this magnitude is a detailed traffic impact study. Now, the applicant did provide the traffic impact study, which was done in 2022, at which time the elevator building, the retail use in it, was still functional. So based upon that study, it showed that the addition of these units is going to cause a minimal increase in the traffic in the area or the existing levels of service at the intersections. The one intersection that was of concern was the northbound movement of vehicles from Water Street onto University. This particular intersection, the northbound, was functioning at a level of service E. Typically, traffic moves in level of service A through F, F being fail and A being the best. This is currently at an LOS E and will continue to remain at an LOS E. One of the things we requested the applicant to do as part of this proposal is to try to improve the efficiency of that intersection. The applicant has since, the Planning Commission's direction, been working with the city administration and at this time, they're going to work with the city engineers to install a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Water and East University in order to address the present delays. It is believed that the four-way stop sign will in fact improve the amount of wait time for vehicles that are moving along this intersection rather than being stacked up over there endlessly. Circulation for fire trucks and also for trash haulers is between the buildings where typically they would enter, they would go up to the end, and then they would have to back up and leave the site. The circulation pattern was found to be acceptable by the fire chief and so is acceptable at this time. With regard to pedestrian sidewalks, there is an existing sidewalk along the site's university frontage. There is no sidewalk currently along this frontage, although it is marked as existing walk. This will be a brand-new five-foot-wide sidewalk installed along the site's Water Street frontage. Short connections will be provided to individual units. These sidewalk connections are just three feet wide. However, since they are on private property, they are not required to maintain the minimum five feet width. Areas where the applicant is providing barrier-free access to the live-work units, they have provided the required width of sidewalks and also handicap accessible ramps for the buildings. The plan also indicates a crosswalk over here with a sidewalk that is along the entire east side of building three, providing connections to those units too. So the sidewalk network that is going to be provided in and around the site will make it very well-connected. In addition, the applicant is providing a connection on this end of the site, which would connect to the Paint Creek Trail, to the Mills parking lot, which is located immediately to the south of the subject site itself. One of the conditions the Planning Commission did place was that the applicant would work with the city to upgrade the quality of sidewalks in this area. There was significant discussion about the sidewalks as they continued further to Sunrise on the east and in this whole area. And the applicant will be working with the city administration and the engineers in order to figure out the best way to align the sidewalks and provide for required barrier-free access ramps to make this intersection function as best as it can. Based on off-street parking, the applicant is providing the required amount of parking to be accommodated within the garage units of the individual garages and also the driveways. The small little projections you see are in fact landscape islands that would separate the driveways one from another. The parking for some of these will be tandem parking. Tandem parking is an acceptable form of providing parking in downtown and areas where there's not as much land area available. However, tandem parking is acceptable where you have parking within the units and the same tenants in this unit has their own vehicles or their visitor vehicles parked here. So in the event they need to move a vehicle that's in the garage, they would just have to shift their own vehicle out so that the vehicle can exit the garage. So that is the proposed design for parking on the site. Going to architecture, I will pull up the architecture on the site. The applicant has proposed a very high quality of architecture for all of the buildings. This is the building that is facing Water Street. As you can see, almost the entire building is to be constructed of brick. It is provided with an asphalt shingle roof. It's provided with a cupola on top to create architectural detail. The main entrance to these buildings has got arches in it like a old-time train depot. So it's with the arch entrances, with the arches above the windows. If the Planning Commission recollects, the Mills Restaurant, which is a building that is over 120 years old at this point, does have similar arches on top of the windows. This is a very historic detail and a historic touch that the applicant is bringing to the building. These are the narrow ends of the building, which are also architecturally detailed. So the applicant has paid attention to all of the facades. This is the building that is facing Water Street. The building that is facing University. The Sixplex, as the applicant likes to call it because it's got six units, has also got a pretty detailed facade, as you can see, with the arches with soldier course of brick with limestone foundation. It's the whole building with the trim that has been provided with limestone. Lot of the details being added to the building create a character and an appearance to the building that is true to the history of Rochester and the quality of architecture that is required over here. The last of the buildings is the building in the back along the east property line and that would be the townhouse building and this would be the townhouse building. These are the garages that would be facing. Even the garages have the barn door style to provide for detail in the structure. The applicant has added some photographs of elevation references so the city council can see how these buildings might appear once they are completed in terms of a rich color of brick and limestone and giving it an established look. Going to landscaping, I will pull up the colored landscaping plan. This is a colored rendering of the landscaping for the site. As the council can see, the applicant is proposing a variety of deciduous street trees along both street frontages. They are also proposing evergreens along the east property line to provide some amount of screening from the property to the east, the back portion, the south portion of the site. This is where there are a couple of benches. The applicant is providing these in order for people who are walking the Paint Creek Trail or connecting to the Paint Creek Trail further south will have a place to rest. It is important to note that the property line for the granary goes somewhere along these lines. So some of this landscaping is located on the adjacent property to the south. The applicant has submitted copy of a landscape easement, which allows them to plant these trees and shrubs on the neighbor's property and they will be maintaining it. It has been submitted in a legal recordable form and is subject to review and approval by the city attorney. One of the things the landscape plan notes is that all of these green areas you see will be seeded. We however believe that seeding does not catch on unless you have perfect weather conditions. Quite often, if we have dry spells like we had earlier in spring and summer, it just ends up being a lot of weeds and a maintenance nightmare for the applicant. So the Planning Commission conditioned that all of the green areas that are shown as lawn must be sodden and not seeded. With regard to tree removal, the site does have some existing trees. However, most of the trees on the site are considered as nuisance species such as silver maple, mulberry, and some elders. The few replacement trees that are required have been inspected by the city's forester, Mr. Banda, and he has approved the tree removal plan for the site at this time. The next aspect is lighting. Lighting forms a very important part of the whole appearance of the buildings itself. Going back to the elevations, the first of the elevations, the light fixtures that the applicant is proposing on the outside facade of the building in terms of Busnick-style fixtures or wall-mounted fixtures are all designed to complement the architecture of the building itself. Trash removal, as it is a residential site, just 30 units, is going to be individual curb site trash pickup. With regard to amenities, which is one of the most important aspects of the site, the biggest amenity on this site is the existing Rochester elevator building or the Rochester Barn. This building over a period of time has fallen into a state of disrepair. So the applicant's proposal is to salvage some parts of it, the original parts of the building, and convert the rest of it into a clubhouse that is open not just to the residents of this development, but also to the general public. It will have common meeting space also. So this is the major amenity that is being provided in addition to the benches that provide a connection to the trail system. For signage, as you saw in the elevations, the train depot style is going to be accented with the words "The Granary" written around it in metal letters. It suits the architectural style of the building, but the sign area is subject to review and approval by administration before it is installed. One of the things the Planning Commission did condition the applicant on the site plan is when you enter the site of University Drive, it is a two-way movement of vehicles. The applicant is proposing a cluster of mailboxes over here. We want to avoid people who are coming back home from work or running their errands from parking here in order to access the mailbox, creating a stacking issue on University. So the Planning Commission conditioned that this entire area needs to be striped as no parking so that nobody parks over here in order to access the mailbox. They can go park in their residential driveway and then come up to the mailbox to access their mail. Finally, the most important thing being the fact that this is a special project. As a special project, a site is required to provide some measurable public benefit. One of the important things, as Mr. Banda mentioned, is this site is a brownfield and requires brownfield remediation and a lot of cleanup of wastes and petrochemicals that are in the site over decades of use. So what the applicant is proposing at this time is not just a brownfield redevelopment. The applicant is also proposing live-work type of spaces, which are a type of residential use that is more popular in the post-pandemic era. With the hybrid work schedule, people don't go to offices every day of the week like we used to in the pre-pandemic era. Now people's remote work or hybrid work is an accepted norm of working. So a lot of people prefer to have a residential setup that is a live-work space so that while they live in the house, they still want to have a separated office area where they can do their office work without the disturbances that come when you're sitting at a regular home or in a regular setup on your dining table trying to do your office work. The elevator building, based on the documentation that the applicant has included in the package, was originally and currently is on the National Register of Historic Places and a report previously provided stated that the Greek's brother Rochester Elevator Company Grain Elevator is an excellent example of 19th century wooden country grain elevator. But over a period of time, the structure has significantly deteriorated. If you would give me a minute, I will pull up the current satellite image that has been taken just in July of this year, which will show you the condition of the elevator building at this time. So the roof is in a state of disrepair and it is currently not a structurally safe building. So what the applicant is doing is this is not a historic restoration. The applicant has to salvage the parts that they can and replace the rest to create the community clubhouse. As a result of these changes, the structure is no longer going to be on the National Register of Historic Places because this would be considered as an adaptive reuse, not a historic rehabilitation or preservation. The applicant however, to do their bit for it, is plans to collaborate with the historical society, city's historical society, in order to make sure that the final elevation meets the intent or the image of what the historical society would like to see on this site. In addition to the evaluation of the site plan as a special project, the applicant is required to go through something called as a sustainability evaluation. The sustainability evaluation worksheet is a worksheet that has got basically six sustainability values, which would be environmental health, mobility, physical strength, public services, neighborhoods, and downtown viability. A total of 20 points are allocated between these six indicator areas. Some of them are rated with one point, some of them have two points, and some of them just have 1.5 points and some are not applicable to a site depending upon where it is located, whether it's a mixed use or whether it's a residential use or a non-residential use. So based upon an evaluation of the granary, at this point of time, the granary scores a total of 14.5 points out of 20. And the reason for this is typically the way the sustainability evaluation goes is if a project scores between 0 and 8 points, it is considered as non-sustainable. If it scores between 9 and 15, it is considered as a project that is sustainable with some mitigation. If it scores above 15, it is considered as a sustainable project. While these are not hard numbers, these are intended to provide the city council and Planning Commission with guidelines while approving projects so you can ask for improvements. This project did score full points for indicators that pertain to environmental health, mobility, and physical strength. With the exception of system capacity, which the applicant really cannot avoid because the site has minimum connections, the sustainability indicator says that you shall not add any more to the existing sanitary sewer system capacity in the area. Since the current use of the site is minimal with just the Rochester elevator building and no residential use, any residential use or any use of the site is pretty much going to exceed the current capacity of the site. So there is no way for the applicant to score points with regard to that. With regard to housing affordability and business attraction, the applicant does not meet the threshold. It could be argued, even though that this does not create new businesses for downtown, the fact that it is creating these live-work units in fact creates many more new tenants who will solicit businesses in the downtown, which is just a couple of blocks away. So there are going to be more people from this development who are going to frequent the businesses, the restaurants, and the retail stores that are in downtown. So the applicant could possibly be granted points for those, though we haven't granted them those with the strict application of the sustainability evaluation. Based on our review of the proposal and the benefit of cleaning up a brownfield and restoring or adaptive reuse of the elevator buildings, we believe this is a sustainable special project. The Planning Commission made a recommendation to the city council to approve the special project for this subject site and also extend the special projects boundary to pick up the entire site, the I1 portion also. That is the whole presentation for this project. I would be happy to answer. I would be happy to answer any questions that the council might have that can provide clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Vidya. C- cu- council, Councilmember Albrecht.
Uh, Vidya, thank you. As always, you do uh uh an amazing job of covering all the points um uh in your presentation. Uh, when you were talking about the um elevator site, there was a picture in the lower-left corner that said Red Fox something. I don't, i- i- and I, and I was hoping that's not how it's gonna look afterwards. My, my understanding was that the elevator's gonna maintain that uh original artwork or painting or advertising. Um, yes. So there was a, a slide, I think afterwards where, so, so.
Yeah, it's up in Fenton, the red.
Yeah, so, okay, okay, okay. So that was.
Can explain that.
Okay, I, I, I just didn't know what, how that fit into your presentation. Then go down to the slide you just had. So is the elevator, are those drawings on the site additions or um that the, the, they're gonna add to the barn uh or the elevator? So.
Yes. So basically what they're doing is the, the Fox, Red Fox outfitters, that is just to give an idea of how this glass conservatory or atrium is going to look. That was a reference picture that the applicant included. But the actual uh elevator building is going to look like what is in front of you on the screen at this time. This is how the final image is going to look like. The front portion of it is going to be preserved and the rear portion where the roof is caved in is going to be replaced with um with an atrium, a glass atrium with this uh appearance and with a new roof on top of it. So this is going to be the final appearance of the building. This would be the front uh front elevation that would actually be pretty much facing the intersection. And then this would probably be the, this is the rear elevation which would be probably the southeast. This would be the right elevation which the applicant would consider facing Water Street where the entry doors are. And then this would be the university elevation.
And, and this, the, this presentation, Tiffany from the Historical Society was part of looking at this with Mosseri and, and the architects and is agreeable with all this?
Um, I will have the applicant answer that, Mr. Albrecht. As far as I understand, the applicant has been working with the Historical Society. Uh, I'm not sure if Ms. Tiffany specifically has had an opportunity to comment on it. I think Mr. Mosheri or Mr. Tringali can answer that better.
And then just, Mayor, just to wrap up, I want to thank Dominic and Mosheri and everything for working with uh the city, the planning commission. This presentation suggests that you've really gone out of your way to make sure that this, we, we respect our history, um, we don't overbuild uh the architecture. I'm sure you know the cost better than, than I do. Uh, just how you've designed it and everything else looks like it will fit in nicely with the downtown Rochester. So I wanted to thank you for all the work you've been doing on this over, over time. I'd like to thank uh the members of council or on the planning commission, Nick and all your team, and Tiffany who's here also, working together. That's what makes Rochester a great place to live and, and also a, a great place for uh uh developers like you to do business. That's it, Mayor.
Any other questions for Vidya? Councilmember Trent?
Uh, yes. Okay, I have, I have a few questions. Um, you were saying that it, F is the worst for, is it the traffic um situation? A through F, like in grade school?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, so E is better, but do they have like another, like if they're trying to get to a D or a, you know, C, what, where uh is that plan? Cause it sounds like they just, I mean, of course they wanna improve. I'm glad they are.
Yes.
Yeah.
We are hopeful, uh, Councilmember Trent, that once the applicant installs the four-way stop sign from a level of service E, it will at least move to a D or a C. So level of service, the level of service depends on how many seconds you wait at an intersection before a vehicle can actually make the turn. I don't know the exact second separation between A through F, but E means you are waiting for a significantly long time before you can make a turn. And since the right-of-way goes along university, people who are moving northbound on Water Street have to endlessly wait till there is a gap somewhere where they can squeeze themselves in. With a four-way stop sign, I believe they will be able to improve the level of service from an E at least to a D if not a C. But I.
Okay.
If the applicant's engineer is over there, they should probably be able to address that more in detail.
Mr. Mayor? I, I have a few questions. I'd like to go through them. Yeah, first of all, I do wanna thank you for this excellent presentation for the Mosheri um group. And um I don't think I've ever got a more detailed uh packet at my doorstep ever, and I really appreciate that level. It was very respectful and very well done. And I, and also like Councilmember Albrecht said, I'd like to thank you for really working hard to um create the elevator and reproduce it as best, you know, to the best of your ability, which actually looks very good. So I want to thank you for that as well. And that um was, I know it was a challenge. So then we have the sidewalk, which is three feet. Was there, no, there was no sidewalk. And so that's a private sidewalk, would be my understanding. And then, so, but it is public use or, or no? I mean, I don't know how you could.
Yeah, sure, yeah, Vidya.
There's only three answers.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
There is a public sidewalk that is along, if you give me one second, I think it is uh, it's a huge packet, so, okay, here we go. So the sidewalk that is placed within the public right-of-way has to be five feet wide because that is the minimum requirement for any public sidewalk for it to be ADA compatible. So the sidewalk where my cursor is, what you see over here, that is a five-foot wide sidewalk.
Okay.
That is a public sidewalk. These little connections that you see stubs coming off, those are located on private property and they are three feet wide.
Okay, got it. So then guest parking, I didn't, was there, I didn't hear whether, how much guest parking there would be, cause if there is overflow, was there a plan B of where that, those guests would be parking?
So there are, in terms of true visitor parking, there are two visitor parking spots, one of which is a handicap accessible spot right next to the elevator building. But in terms of guest parking for the visitors of these units itself, uh, there are fifteen two-bedroom and fifteen three-bedroom units as a sum total for this project, which require a total of seventy-five parking spaces based on our ordinance. If we count all of the parking spaces within the garages and in the driveway, they will have a total of one hundred and twenty-two parking spaces. So they will meet the needs of the residents of the two-bedroom and the three-bedroom units, and if any of those tenants have guests coming, the guests will most likely be parking in the driveway in front of their garages. That would be their parking, designated parking spot. So they will have enough not to create a nuisance out of the waiting streets.
Okay. Um, so water runoff? There is gonna be some, cause there's more pervious um surfaces than, I mean, impervious versus the pervious now. Uh, there's quite a lot of concrete, a lot of buildings, so I wasn't clear where that water runoff is gonna be, cause it's right next to the creek. And I was just curious about that strategy.
Because of the size of the site, Councilmember Trent, and the fact that there is really no room for a detention pond or anything, uh, Mr. Banda can correct me, but the applicant will have to go through full engineering, and I believe they're gonna be providing underground detention. That's how you hold the water. You put the water under the site and then you carefully release it into the nearby creek to prevent flooding. But uh, Mr. Banda or the applicant's engineer would be uh in a more technical position to address how stormwater runoff on the site will be addressed.
Mr. Mayor, I, I can help with that. Thanks, Vidya. So if, right down the middle of the gray there, that's where it's gonna be the oversized pipes, and they have to be sealed pipes because we don't want groundwater getting into them or out because of the contamination, right? So, and then it's treated, and then it goes in the storm sewer before it even gets to the river. So that's kind of what dictated how to put the building, so they needed a long run to store this water. So they're doing a ten-year storm um is what we're doing. If you had a, a green field, you would try to get a hundred-year storm. We already talked to DEQ Eagle, and our engineers in ten years find here because um we don't want too much water coming in there. So they're either hold it in these big oversized pipes, so sealed system.
Okay, great. Yep, that looks good. Okay, so trees. There were some native trees mentioned. Um, not so much my recommendation or would be uh to add as many native shrubs or any grasses would be native as well to soak up some of this water runoff because of the longer roots and the um, and the, and the value of them, just to put that in, cause that's my expertise. And it's good to see that you're gonna put some native trees in as well. Okay, one last question is regarding the clubhouse. And um, the uh, how is that going to work? Cause you're saying it's open to the public. Is that like a rentable space? Um, how does, is there like a plan on that? Um, where this is, any specifics, availability?
Mr. Tringali can answer that when he comes up.
Okay, okay. All right. And I think that is it for the land, for the landscaping. Like I said, Vidya, that, um, yeah, I really encourage uh native plantings as, as much as possible, including plants and, and shrubs as well. That's it. Thank you very much. It was a great present, excellent presentation.
Councilmember Gold?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that great presentation, uh, Vidya. Yeah, I really love the nod to the traditional architecture and that Red Fox building right there, uh, uh, Councilmember Albrecht is in Fenton, and that was a green elevator I grew up by. And it's really sharp, the way they preserved uh the elevator, made it into a really nice retail space. So if it's anything like that, it's really great. I'm really happy about the cleanup of the brownfield. That's one of my top things I love about this. But I had a couple of questions. Love the plan, love the, the uh, the thought that was put into it. The island between the two right-way turns, how big is that island? And are you gonna put something there or is it just gonna be like mulched or, or what?
Vidya?
Let me just pull up the landscape plan and I should be able.
While she's doing that, anything would have to be under eighteen to thirty inches so we don't obscure view, but I think there's vegetation if there can.
It is just going to be lawn area so that it doesn't impact vision as you're turning in or turning out, doesn't create a blind corner.
Yep.
So, uh, may I ask, okay, uh, just a couple of questions. So there, that was a four-way stop during the pandemic.
Correct.
Did we learn anything on the traffic flow when that was a four-way stop?
Yep, I can help with that. So it wasn't the pandemic, it was there for Main Street makeover. So you're thinking way back. So we all remember that and it helped immensely. And then, but it was kind of um done half, half, what's the right?
Half-heartedly.
Halfway, thank you. Halfway because um at the time we knew it was temporary, so we didn't spend the money to do the crosswalks, et cetera. So we are planning on, it was supposed to be this summer, but now we're gonna wait if this gets approved while Mosheri's is working, that we don't wanna mess up our new road. We have to pave from Main Street to Water. So when we do that, we're gonna work with the developer and put brick crosswalks just like Main Street. So, and then actually there's um, we're narrowing down the road a little bit, so it feels like you're gonna stop there. It's such a wide road, so it's already been designed. Uh, we've got it with the engineers. So four-way stop, we'll do the brick walkways, we'll work with the developer to see how much we can get participation, um, so it'll be more formal. And it worked great during the Main Street makeover, this will be even more formal. And we're hoping to get to a level of sort of C. I think we can get there with that in mind, so it's not just kind of like, oh, you threw stop signs up. It's, it looks like a formal actual um, like a, like a formal uh four-way stop road, we call it road diets, narrow it down a little bit, slow everybody down. And, and we are also checking making sure we're not gonna stack through university, you know, if you were coming, uh, going east. So all that should work good. I worked with TIA on it, I'm a Traffic Improvement Association, and then with the other engineers. So we're confident this is gonna be a huge upgrade.
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, I think I heard you say that right now that site does not use the water or sewer. And I know that it doesn't have a sewer or anything. And I know they're not getting a good score for that, but how is that gonna impact folks? Water costs, water pressure, everything are a big concern to citizens on that side of Maine. Is that, is that going to change anything over there?
So when the applicant, uh, if the city council should choose to send this on to the next step, the applicant will go through full engineering with the city's engineer, AEW. At that time, all the utility calculations will be run and all the capacities. Right now, the applicant has been through engineering approval only to make sure that the project is feasible. The first step of engineering is project feasibility. If the engineer believes that this project is going to place a significant burden on the city's infrastructure, they would have said it right off the bat, this project is not going to work or the intensity of use is not going to work. The engineer made a determination that yes, subject to all the engineering standards of the city being met, this project will address the concerns without burning the infrastructure. So that would be the next step after city council action, full engineering, at which time they will address the capacity concerns and what infrastructure upgrades they are going to do so as not to impact all the existing businesses and people who live in and around that area.
So again, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and thank you, Vidya. So part of our due diligence for the developer, to be fair, is we get into it even more than you probably need to. We don't ask for full engineering, but in this case, fire department met, we're looping the water main, which is gonna give us redundant water, and they're doing that for us. We checked the capacity for sanitary, there was sanitary at the white building, never in the barn. There was never water in the elevator. Um, so they are lavatories or water. So um, we've already done that preliminary um work with AEW and it's upgrading the system. So we know capacity's there, that fire-water loop will make great um redundancy. So while we're opening up university, we can tie all those things together. So they got into that already.
Thank you. So these are privately owned residences. So the individuals living there will have uh some restrictions placed on their ability to modify the properties, I assume, painting their garage doors, you know?
These are not your apartments.
These are rental units.
Okay.
These are rental. So the applicants, the tenants will have to sign lease agreements, and I'm sure Mr. Mosheri is not going to allow them to change anything that changes the character of the look of the structures. So one of the things the planning commission did require as a condition was that as part of any lease agreement, any tenant signs with the Mosheri Group, they're gonna make sure that they don't change these structures to make it look like a business. It's going to maintain the integrity of what it is approved, as it is approved at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I like this lesson, it taught me something in my whole career here. I'd never thought of it. This way, Dominic Mosheri Senior, that, when he came in one time, when they originally looking at a project here, he gave us a little bit of a, I'm gonna say a lecture and a little bit of knowledge share that. Listen, he said, from his own experience as a builder. So he would build a condo association, put in a gorgeous entranceway, a guard, a guard shack, a gate, a fountains, colored water, all that good stuff. Then when he got to sell the project at fifty-one percent, they turned it over to the association. And when they, after a couple of years, his name's still on, it said Built by Mosheri. And after a couple of years, boy, the dude's, wow, I don't have the money to put the color in the water and turn the fountain on and pay for a guard and keep the guard shack open. And he said, you want me to own this because I can't lease this out if I don't own it. So he changed his whole model over the years, that a lot of these folks now are keeping them as apartments because they, and we can keep the pedal to the metal on them because they need to rent them out. So it's a better w- working relationship than, our problems in town right now are condo associations, not all of them, but most of them that don't wanna up that fee to take care of the roofs and the landscaping, the roads on Miller Road, things like that. So, so we learned a lot from that and it's rung true in many, many communities across metro Detroit that you see a lot of the developers, Mr. Randazzo, I'm not selling my product. You want me to own it, so I have to maintain it. So I, I think that's a good lesson.
That, that makes sense. Thank you. And one final question. What is the status of the collaboration with the Historical Society? How many times have they met? What kind of input have they provided or will they be providing?
I think, I think between the two.
I believe Mr. Mosheri or Mr. Tringali are willing to answer the question when they step up.
Anything further?
No, I don't, I don't have a question. I just have, I guess, comments. I have a couple of questions, but for later. I wanna thank you for a beautiful project. Um, I, but being in real estate, it's really hard finding a developer who will put, take that much time into developing and adding all that character to it because I know it's not cheap, okay? Um, and I think that what you've done is an outstanding job on the whole entire design and development. I do like how you left all the garages to the inside and the flow of everything, and I really appreciate you uh taking the time to uh really design a nice building and for keeping what you could historic about the land, about the um elevator. I do have a question though for administration or whoever, is there a way that we can still leave a s- a monument there that says this was a future site or was a site in memorializing it?
Absolutely. So in my office, I have the second replica of it.
Oh, that's what you did say.
It's by my door. So we will make sure we donate that to the developers, they could put that in the building. That was, it's the exact same mock, it's the second one that nobody ever put up for some reason, so.
The other thing is, I don't like that there's not a lot of green space. I know you don't have a lot to work with, and I also know it's in downtown, so I can't expect the world having the green space, but what you've done has been nice and it's nice and sufficient for that. So um, I'm, I appreciate, I appreciate what you've done with that, so thank you.
Any other questions for Vidya?
Thank you, Vidya. Before we start the public hearing, Mosheri's, would you like to come up and maybe address some of the...
Well, thank you very much for your time and thank you for the nice words. It's, it's not me though, it's Dominic and Nancy, my work wife, she does all the work, so you get to give her a round of applause. Um, I'm going to just plug in a brief presentation that you've all seen before, if that's okay. In the meantime, I can answer some questions, and then Dominic's going to do the presentation. Vidya, do you need to exit out so I can control this?
No, we should be able to minimize it.
I think, yep.
I believe I'm already out of it. You could go ahead and share.
There you go.
What's that?
Oh, just start without your data, click the button.
Yeah, right there.
Right there?
No, right there, yep. Jeez.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Just the job.
Dominic, could you introduce yourself since we have so many Dominics?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, Dominic F. Mosheri is Nancy from clarification, yeah. Let's see here. Is there any questions for me while I'm here before Dominic starts? Okay, good. Dominic? Yeah, but we're very happy to be here. Uh, we've been working endlessly with, with Nick and the crew and the engineers and Vidya. Thank you again for the presentation. Um, our partnerships with the Rewill family and ourselves are long-lived and will remain long-lived. Uh, so again, thank you very much for your time and we're very much looking forward to it.
Thank you. My name's Dominic Tringali, I'm the architect, been working together with Mosheri's for like 35 years now, so, um, they're great builders to work for, gave me some great latitude on this, which I'm excited to show you. Vidya did a great job of doing it, so I'll go through it fairly quickly, but definitely answer some of your questions and go over some other things that you have. The site plan you just saw with her, so we, we have broken it down into a pedestrian-oriented residential community. So the, um, the building here is our two stories, which is an 11plex, these are all for lease. This is our six-unit building here, which is three stories, which is the live-work, and this is the 13-unit building, that's live-work again, that is three stories. All of these units though are kind of geared around the granary and the elevator building. So that's what the whole theme is, and that's how the architecture we created. Uh, I'm going to get into that part a little bit more and showing you some of these renderings and what we're doing.
That's the one.
Yeah, so, so this is the iconic portion of the building. As you probably all know, the building was done in, in the 1880s and in, it, it really was done in three sections. So two of the sections were just not able to be able to save this part of the building, we are, and then we are adding the greenhouse, which is not going to be as strong as the one in Fenton, a little bit more subdued, which is off to the side, facing more, I would say, University than actually that corner building through there. This is the side of the buildings here that we've created. And then in, in a little bit more detail, this is just for reference, this right here is actually one of the old buildings that I did do the research and, and the Historic Society extremely helpful and gave me, there's a lot of reports on it and a lot of information that we want to preserve through here. Um, this part of the building that was on Water Street was actually an afterthought and filled in. So there's actually a canopy there now that we plan on keeping, and it's already opened up now, if you go by. Um, the greenhouse is going onto this section up through here. So this is actually the original building. We are keeping it intact, keeping it open, and to answer some of those questions, it's a clubhouse for our community, but there's only 30 of our residents that are going to be there. So it is going to be available for school tours, other tours, we offered it to Historic Society for them to do tours as well. The whole theme on the inside is going to preserving the history of it and how it started and how Rochester developed as an agricultural community and how that all developed. So that's our game plan with doing that. We're actually doing a couple historic projects in Lake Orion where they have this little video that's called Moments in Time, if you've ever seen it, where you kind of flash it with your phone and this three-minute video comes up. We plan on doing the same thing here, so not only having the plaque on the outside, but having this ARQ code that you can actually press. So if a school teacher's coming by and they want to know the history of it, they can just simply do it on their phones, and anybody can really see that. I think it's a great tool, and I think it's something that will be well worth it. We'll work closely with Tiffany and the Historic Society in putting that together, and actually, we're not the experts on it, they are, so we're going to get all their information from them, and the whole decor as well will be that way.
Just real quick, what's the square footage of that?
Uh, that building is like less than 1,800 square feet, so...
So it's quite large.
Uh, yeah, when you take the whole thing into account and the greenhouse that we're adding, so, yeah. So it'll be a nice place, could be a meet, we're going to have a conference room table and some seat, and some seating, but pretty much kept all open. We're going to try to open up the inside and keep those barn and the barn beams there. So we'll keep, I think, a good portion of it, especially on the outside of what we need to.
Well, you have restrooms in there?
Yes, we're going to add one, you can kind of see it in the corner right through here.
Okay.
Yes.
So you said tours?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, you said tours, but, but that's different from somebody renting it to...
Yeah, no, we don't plan on it being really rented out.
Okay, so it's just open to the public means that you can schedule a tour?
Yeah, you'd have to call ahead of time and say, hey, we'd like to do a tour, here's the code and...
Okay, just wanted to define that, man, it's not...
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not, you can't just walk in.
Okay, okay.
Right, yeah, that's not the goal of it.
Just wanted to make sure I understood that.
So that's kind of where we're at with the barn, those are just the elevations that you saw before. So this is like, Vidya had said, this is going to be on Water Street with the canopy, this will be the rear of the building, won't be seen until you drive in. This is where we're adding that smaller version of a greenhouse on there, which I think will be very unique through there. Now with that in mind, we've taken that concept of that era of the railroads and now created our other elevations, and these are more the colored renderings of it. The historic background I got from it to create it was obviously the, the old drugstore that we have there on Fourth, which is a great piece of architecture. You see the brickwork on top both there and on Mill Street, we incorporate that as well. And then the roof lines all came from the old train depots back in the day. So that's kind of our historic reference that we put together to, to put all the buildings together, put all the details that we have, and I'm excited about it as it all came together. So this is the unit that you'd see off of University with, like it's been pointed out, we're going to keep that old kind of signage through there. The highlighting of the canopies that cross over on the lighting will be unique. These canopies that you see through there as well, too, picking up on that reminiscent old-world architecture, and then the balconies that are floating through there, as well as the dormers and the cupola. So I'm excited to see this come together, all the brickwork I think will be unique.
Gorgeous.
This is what you have off of Water Street, the larger unit, where we have the stone coming up, and then the Rochester placement on this one through here. Very controlled, but yet, you know, has some great detail that follows through through it. And once again, these are the live-work units, so these are three stories. The live part of it is on the second floor and the third floor where the bedrooms are, and the first floor is like a flex space. So someone, you know, with COVID, uh, this building too, those other references I should mention, we've had a version of this called Iron Gate in Birmingham off Easton Street, extremely successful. Um, most of the units there were home offices because people really don't go to, fully to the, to the big three anymore. They're actually home, you know, two or three days a week. They can actually turn this into their own space. If someone does have their own business, they use that for that as well, too. So it's limited, it's really not open to the public, but it definitely can be something that someone wants to use as a flex space. They don't have to have it as a business, it could be just another rec room or something in there, but it does give you that flexibility of being on one floor, it could be your home office, could be a business that you're doing on the internet, or could be something along those lines, and it gives you that flexibility to do what you want to do there. We found that to be very successful. We also feel there's a space for that in Rochester, that we don't really have a place like that, so, so someone could do that. The new collaborative does that to some degree, but not in your own space.
Right.
They cannot lease this space out to anyone else. This is one unit that you see right here, all three stories, and it has to say that way, that's in our lease, that, that they have to sign through there. So you can't lease this space to someone else or do anything along those lines, we just simply don't allow that. Our leases are pretty lengthy, pretty restrictive, so all those things that you've mentioned are really covered on there. They can't change the facade, they can't really put signs out there, et cetera, et cetera.
So it's only for them?
Correct.
Like you can't have an employee or assistant or...
No, yeah, no, that's not the game plan, it's very limited of what they have through there.
And I know Vidya talked about it, that there's no commercial application, so you can't put a sign in the...
Correct.
First floor.
Right, yeah, exactly. So the sign that we will have on there is limited, that if it is a psychologist or something that does have someone come up in there, we do have that kind of limitations, but it's very limited of what we've put together. And I think we have some language...
Samples in there and language.
Yeah, they, so in home occupations, anybody in a neighborhood, if they're home occupation, they can have two square feet, a tactful sign, they're allowed to have that presently in our neighborhoods even.
Yeah.
So we're following the exact same rules.
Yeah, state law.
Mayor Proton, Selvi?
But follow-up question on the sign, so if, if a business wanted to have a sign, it would have to be first be approved by Mosheri as well as the city?
Correct.
So it's going to fit in with the charm and then our ordinance?
And it's still limited to the two, two square feet. Yes, so it's limited to two square feet, correct.
Okay. But that's not every business, though.
No, I mean...
They could.
They could if they wanted to, they'd have a little plaque on the side, but I mean, it's a little plaque, that's idea if they wanted to.
No, I meant that it not, not any business can just...
Oh, no, 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 just the people that...
No, this is just a very passive business.
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah, it's a very passive business. Based on our history of what we did in Birmingham, it was very limited that it was actually a business, it was really more, more home offices or simply rec rooms through there. But there's still a need for that, and people really want that, and they like to have their own space. Um, so the home offices are extremely popular now. Okay, um, just a couple more backdrops. So we did real, real closely in how it blends in with the downtown. So those are just the elevations of the Royal Park, then you have Sunrise, our building through here, the elevator, and then the rest of the downtown in this area, just to give you an idea. We really looked into that, that cupola, it's still not even taller than the Royal Park or the building adjacent to us. So I think it's a nice touch that really adds to it, and I think it'll be a focal point through there. And then once again, looking at all the history and the other buildings that we had surrounding us was key to developing this. And then just a little shot, so this is right here at Main Street, at the cross there, you can see our development, and when you really look at it, I tried putting it in there, it's really going to have very little impact from that part. So I think we'll meet all those requirements as well, too. Uh, any other questions that I might have missed, I didn't answer?
No, I just have a question for the city, though. So on the discussion regarding changing the, that to a four-way stop, okay, you already have the lanes going past the post office and up to the bridge that direction and the center turn lane, but you can see that you narrowed it down, okay? How are we going to, because that's really wide that you're now moving?
So, well, it's, it's all been engineered, so it's literally a road diet, they move in the curbs, getting green space between the curbs and the sidewalks, so it makes it more feel like just a normal two-lane road, because you're right, it's a free-for-all. There's still going to be the right turn acceleration lane coming off of Water going west, but it's engineered down, so they're not 20-foot wide lanes anymore, they're going to be your standard 12 feet wide. So, um, we had it all, AEW laid it out for us, and we met with Mosheri and they were good with it.
Well, the only reason I asked is because the, there is so much, there's so much traffic right there with the post office and the library. I mean, is it going to make it harder?
No, it should make it easier because now you have, we can re-stripe it so that you'll, right now, you don't know, am I in the left turn lane or am I not in the left turn lane? So we'll actually be able to swoop in, have a dedicated left turn.
Not that way, I'm talking about the other way, because the other way is so wide, and now you're going to go from that wide down to the other...
It'll probably be a right turn lane only onto Water, or to Old Town going north, and then a through lane, and then a left turn lane to Water. So it'll be more formal, uh, it's, it's way wider.
On University, you're keeping the turn lane...
Yep.
All the way there. Okay, so you're just narrowing after Water then that's going towards the library then.
Correct, and the other way, too. So when you come off of Old Town, well, it's, it's, you know, Old Town, you make that, I'm sorry, it's Water, when you make that turn out, that will have a, it won't be a wide-open lane, because you're going right into the back of people that are parking there right now. It's, it's not designed with a, um, a throat-down, they call it, at the intersection, so it's all going to be re-engineered to make it more formal at that spot.
Okay, but you're not going to narrow the piece from Main Street, University to Water, that little section really tiny because there's so much, okay?
No, it's still two lanes.
Okay, all right. And still parking on the street there?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, I think we, one of them, we pick up two spaces on the south side, street parking, so, yep.
Any further questions for the applicant before we open the public hearing?
Just wanted to clean that up. No, awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will open the public hearing at 8:04. Any public comments? Ms. Shepherd, come on up. How are you this evening?
Oh, just fine. My name is Margaret Shepherd, and I live at 628 Rewill Drive in Rochester, obviously. Uh, and I'm going to read some of this because sometimes at my age, I'm not as good as I could have been. First, I would like to thank all the city council members for their dedication. I am impressed by all of you, believe me, I just, having sat here and watched you on TV, it's, it's incredible. We're so fortunate. I can't even guess the extra hours that you put outside the council meetings. Second, well, actually, second, I would like to say, I love this development, it's beautiful. I mean, I can't imagine, if I were younger, I'd like to live there. Uh, but I'd like to address the proposed four-way stop sign, and I understand the concern. Um, it's at Water Street and East University. I worked part-time for the Transportation Department of General Motors Research Laboratories for eight years before I went on to another job within the labs. I respect the time that transportation and traffic engineers put into planning efficient traffic patterns. However, they do not live in our city and don't know how the changes will affect nearby roads. My concern is for the Old Town Road intersection at East University. The library and the post office generate a large amount of traffic that use that intersection. Right turners won't be as affected as much as the left turners. This caused a problem in the past, last time a stop sign was placed at Water and East University. The stop sign causes a change in the amount of traffic that goes through, so instead of having maybe three cars go through or four cars go through and there's a spot, space, you have them blunk, blunk, blunk. And so anybody that tries to turn left onto East University and go to the east, it's a very horrible problem. This affected citizens that lived in the northeast neighborhoods of Rochester and Shelby Township. The stop sign was removed because of citizen concerns, and I don't think that's been addressed. I certainly like what you planned to do with the road leading up, the East University up to Water, and I really think that maybe, you know, pedestrian crossing could be put in there, but let's do it electronically, let's not make a stop sign. It just seems to me that 30 or 40 cars going through from this development shouldn't override the rights of, of people in that general area. of people in that general area. I know when we first, my friend Nancy and I did the, did a petition, we were able to get 86 signatures. But I also know that Steve, one of the fellows that lived in, you know, north of town, or east of town, rather, said he could have gotten a lot more signatures from his development. And so I think it's a very bad idea. But I, I do love, I love this. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Brian, anybody else out there?
There is no one online.
Okay, thank you. So at 8:08, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I guess, to Ms. Shepherd's point, I guess that's what I was kind of speaking to as well. I think the four-way stop is not the answer there. I think that that is too much of a heavily-traveled area. When we put the four-way stop there on Fourth Street, down by the other parking structure there, that worked out great, because you really needed it. And it's even harder now, though, when you look at it, because so many cars park alongside of the street, it is hard to see at times. But that was, to me, that was a better place to put it. You're not putting it into a regular thoroughfare that just goes from one area to the other. Yes, I understand for slowing the traffic down a little bit, because I've seen how they go there. But you have two extremely busy places, not counting the Royal Park when it's full and active, or the assisted living that's there. I think that we really need to find a different solution to that besides that. And I only, I even think that some sort of blinking light system or something there is even better if you're going to have that much traffic. And I, too, when I was reading over the traffic study, I was, I mean, you kind of need to be a rocket scientist to read it. Some of the detail was kind of detailed that way. But I just know, just from walking town and living here all these years, that is a very busy area. And I do think, to our residents' point, that that is going to cause a huge problem in the future. We just don't know it yet. So if it does, can we look to a solution that will change that? Or are we going to be just set in stone, keeping it that way? You're too close to, you're too close to Main Street, and you're, it's too busy right there.
I think we can always change it if it doesn't work.
I know, but we always say that, and we, sometimes we just don't. So I just want to make sure. It has nothing to do with your development or anything like that. This is just, in general, if we, if we didn't even have that development there, and we put in four-way stops, that's how I'm looking at it, that you're going to, you still have a ton of traffic there. And it's going to take time for people to get really adjusted to that. And we don't need anybody getting hit. It's bad enough. We, I think we need more blinking light systems in our city, because we have so much pedestrian traffic now, which we wanted to be a walkable community. And now we have to take that next step to do the safety piece of it, especially in that area, especially for all the people that will be living there, too. Other than that, I make a motion to approve as presented.
So a motion by Councilmember Peterson, is that with the four-way stop sign?
Well, yeah, that's what's been asked for so far. Can I support that motion?
So motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Discussion, Councilmember Trent.
Yeah, I, too, am concerned about the four-way stop as, as being the answer, especially since it got an E. And whenever I got, I didn't, I guess I, I'm not going to admit if I got any Es in my classes, but when I did, it was a really bad thing. So my teacher asked me more than she would want me to make it a B, at least. So going from a hypothetical, probably an E, to maybe a D, is, is a little gray area. Although I do love this project as well, and I understand that traffic is always going to increase. It's always the question. And I know that some people say, eh, you know, say la vie, we are going to have more traffic. But it has to be, there is a, there seems to be, like, there should be a Plan B. I mean, there really should be some kind of Plan B that is actually tangible to be, to be a discussion point that makes me or others, like Ms. Shepherd, and Councilwoman Ann Peterson, to feel assured that it's more than, yeah, we're going to have more traffic, you know, and that's, that's that.
Very good. Further discussion. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. So I would like to hear a little bit more about the workings that have been going on with the Historical Commission. I know Tiffany is here. She doesn't necessarily need to speak, but I think it should be for public knowledge that she is here. So anything we say about the Historical Commission, you know, she's here to validate, if you will. I think you've done a fantastic job, you know, kind of working the backroads ahead of time and honoring this historic site. But as the developer, if you want to say anything about that?
I would love to. So I worked with Tiffany, so we've had at least three or four meetings, kind of kept them abreast of what's going on in the very beginning to what we're doing now. Our recent meeting was that we have a few steps that we want to get them involved in. One is about the interiors and what we're doing, what we're going to preserve, what photos we're going to save. And the second one is about that little piece we're going to put together, as far as the history piece, that people be able to, you know, really look at and capture. So we've talked about when that's ready, when we're doing, we bring them, get them involved. And then talked about other possible fundraiser events with them as well, too, hosting it at the place. So, and that's kind of where we've left it at that particular point. Not sure if Tiffany wants to say anything, but she's more than welcome, too.
Fantastic. Thank you. To me, this, this project is a dream come true. When, you know, so many people have looked at this site and thought about it, and it's troubled, and we love it, and it's in our history, and it's our charm. And so I just say, thank you, thank you, thank you, for what, the Mosheri family, the Rewald family, Dominic, your gift of vision and creativity, what you're bringing here to the city. It is a dream come true.
Mr. Mayor, oh, go ahead, Mr. Cool.
Mr. Mayor Cool.
I, I just, yeah, I'm a big fan of the whole project. The, the one question I have is, the 1,800-square-foot green elevator space is going to be pretty cool. It's going to be open. What is the thinking to keep that more or less for the folks there? That, that seems like that'd be really great for, like, wedding receptions or holiday parties. I don't know. Is there a reason?
No particular reason. I mean, something that can definitely be discussed. We just, we're not in the event business, you know, so we want to make sure that's fair. You know, our residents are taken care of, as well as our community. But, you know, there's also all sorts of issues that come at hand when you start renting out facilities. So that's kind of the premise of it, I guess.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robert.
Just, just one last thing. All of us on City Council have, have watched social media over the last few years about what's going to happen with the elevator. And there's a lot of misinformation out there. And as, as Mayor Pro Tem Salvia said, the fact that you worked with the Historical Commission and Tiffany and everything else like that, I hope the messaging on the elevator gets out there accurately, as it's been presented today, that it is going to be preserved, that it is going to be a focal point of this development, and that you get the credit you deserve for, for preserving that, because that was the third rail over the last couple of years, talking about that building. And, you know, even when you had presented your plans to the Planning Commission, we knew that it wasn't coming down. I read social media posts saying all different kinds of things, and obviously, you know, you can't, everything on the internet is not true. But I, I hope your marketing of this really reinforces the fact that you've worked with the city, you've worked with the Planning Commission, you've worked with Tiffany and her, her group to preserve, really, a, a place that everybody goes by and thinks fondly of as they, as they drive or walk by there. So kudos to you and, and Mr. Tringali, you know, touching on all the stuff you did, too. I didn't understand that one page with all the different pictures of the buildings until you presented it, going, oh, I see the windows here, or the arch here. So again, that, that's, as, as Mayor Pro Tem Salvia said, this is, this is a, really a dream come true from where we were two years ago, where we were two years ago. So, thank you.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I'll just pile on, too. The attention to detail was exceptional, and really appreciated that, and really making it blend into the town. And besides traffic, we know we have that, but I didn't want to lose the fact that I, I have a design background, and I really, really appreciate every attention to detail that, that you did, and it, and showed how your thought process was of making it just another part, an extension of the town that actually blends in and just doesn't just stick out like a sore thumb. So thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you. And I think the best detail of that is making it look like the train station, since the depot's across the street. You know, I think that just connects really well. But I guess that's it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I would be remiss, and I want to go on record saying, thank you, Ms. Shepherd, and Councilwomen, that the best traffic minds went out there and spent time. Here's the goal: make it safe. It's, we, you will not believe how many people call a week, like, I think I'm going to die trying to get from Water across the street. Our answer is, the way it's set up today, you need to go up, all the way up to Main Street, past the donut shop, go to the light and cross, or if you're on this side, go across. So, but there is a way to control that. So if I Google Earth, you can see, we're going to, we're keeping the lanes the way they are, but narrowing everything down, parking, stop signs, brick walkways. You'll be very safe going there. The goal is to take it from a E. It's going to get worse if you do this. You want to slow everything down, control it, get it to a C, and that's how you do that, by controlling it. So, but if it doesn't work, if it doesn't work, we won't be stuck on our morals. We would reevaluate that after it's built and functioning. Absolutely, that's fair to say. I'm going on record right now, saying the city, our traffic folks, the chiefs, both chiefs, at that time, we all went out there with our engineer, with our DPW people, to make sure this works and make it safer. That's the key. I'm not worried about people blowing through there, which they do now, and you take your life into your hands. We have a public parking lot there, that if you want to go to catching fireflies, we see people run across the street. You shouldn't have to do that. Stop, walk, and we'll be all right. But we will have Plan B, if that's what we need. I, I take that seriously.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. I might as well talk, too. So one of the planners, one of the planners' conditions was that the city attorney to approve the landscape and sidewalk easement agreement, which is what would be part of your motion to approve that as well. The only comment I would make, because I did look at it, and, and I don't think this is much of a change from the developer's standpoint, but since it is a requirement of a special project approval to have this landscaping buffer, is to add a line I can work with their attorney on, and they've worked with him several times on, on these, is to add it that they can't change or terminate the easement without city approval. Since it's part of the city approval to have this landscaping on this other property, it, it really is tied to the project, and, and I don't, I don't see that being an issue for the developers. And so I'd just like to have that be part of the, the motion to address that.
That's fine.
Yep. I see Dominic shaking his head, so that's good.
So Madam Clerk, do we, there's two motions here. Do we need, this is the first one, and they're separate? Okay.
I would do the boundary first, which would make sense, so you can then do a special project for the whole area.
That's fine. So a motion to, well, we didn't do the public hearing for that one, or did you combine the two?
Correct. We haven't done this.
We have not, so we have to.
There's a motion on the floor now for the site.
First one.
Yeah, so I should.
Well, you can make that subject to approval of the boundary change.
Okay, I'll do that, subject to the boundary change.
Okay, Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll have a, we'll open the public hearing for the Granary Special Project Boundary Modification at 8:20. Are there any public comments? Seeing them, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support. Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Move the dirt.
When is it going to be done?
Soon as Nancy can get an infra permit. Thank you very much for your time and your trust. Very much looking forward to it.
Thank you. Good luck. Really, how, when will it?
What is your time?
We're looking at getting an infra permitting in the next, what, six weeks, you think? And then that takes a couple of months. So it'll probably be late winter of next year, early spring, to start moving stuff around, and maybe getting some dirt worked on in the meantime, so that you can get you an idea.
And then, once you move the dirt, how long?
Yeah, it'll be about, it'll be about 24-month build time.
Two months, two years.
Two years, yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you need this big packet back?
No, you can keep it. There's a sample lease in there, if you're interested.
No, I thought, I'm going to go sell them all for you.
It's a big packet.
Yeah.
Next, we have, there are no legislative deliberations. Reports, regular business, first of consideration for the SMART Municipal Credit Contract for fiscal year 2024. Mr. City Manager?
Yep, so that's our standard agreement that we do with SMART, and it's in your packet for review.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So for the city administration, will this work, and will this be part of with working with OPC and that? Okay, all right, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought. All right, thank you.
Your motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration on elevator reimbursement agreement pertaining to the Brownfield Grant Agreement for 303 East University. More granary stuff.
More granary. I'm going to ask Mr. Christian Hauser, our Brownfield Authority Chairman, and Marcy Morawaki, our Deputy Treasurer, to just fill in a little bit on the background work that we have to do in order to finish off this million-dollar grant that we got from Eagle.
Welcome, Marcy and Christian Hauser.
Thank you. So just as a little background, in September of 2020, the city received a million-dollar grant from Eagle for brownfield cleanup at the property of 303 East University. At that time, the, the deadline for the project was set at two years, with the completion of September 22. A lot was happening in 2020, along with the global pandemic, and there were some changes in the developers and the property ownership transfers. But we had a few delays, but the city requested an extension from Eagle in August of 2022. And we received that with an extension of the completion date to September 11, 2024. As you can see, when you drive by the site, some cleanup has occurred, and it's been continually underway. And with the approval tonight, I'm sure more work will be done. The city has been in accordance with Eagle's requirements, submitting quarterly reports and for any kind of expenditures that have taken place. So the, it's now time to formalize the reimbursement process and agreement with the city and Mosheri Elevate LLC. So we met with the Brownfield Authority on August the 25th, and you, you got some information from Christian Hauser previously. So it is our, I don't know if you wanted to add a little bit more to that?
Yeah, that's okay. I'll follow up. Good evening, Christian Hauser, on behalf of the Brownfield Committee. It was actually August 28th that we had met, and then we had come here, and I had provided some background information. Essentially, this is a Brownfield Grant Reimbursement Agreement. As I mentioned in my last meeting, or at the last meeting, that the city's not paying any money. The state of Michigan is giving the city $1 million, and we are holding almost as like an escrow agent, that we will be dispersing to Mosheri upon successful application of payment, upon the view of documents, et cetera. So when those documents are received, everything is evaluated, Eagle gets it, and all the checks and balances are made off, and the city will disperse the appropriate amount consistent with that pay application. And presently, there's some outstanding balances due that we have to get caught up on. And I believe that number is, I can tell you in just a second, I'm sorry, I lost my page, is 113,325. Of that, 104,000 roughly, and some change, will go to developer. $8,700 will go back to the city for expenses. That will leave approximately $886,000 left for the Brownfield work that will be performed by the developer. One of the questions that had come up in the meeting was about indemnification. What happens once the project is done, and Eagle may do an audit, or some type of documentation comes up that doesn't line up? Is the city exposed? Does the city have an obligation to remedy it? And under paragraph 14, I believe, there is the indemnification clause, which, in a sense, we would turn over to Mosheri, the developer, and they would stand in the shoes of the city and defend and hold harmless us from any type of economic liability. So the Brownfield Development Authority was, was comfortable with the language in that agreement, and we would ask that the city council approve this agreement, get it executed so work could commence in short order, and then that timeframe that they just articulated would clatter and start. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Council.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Discussion. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. Christian, thank you for clarifying, because for me, it's really helpful to just hear, and for the public, you hear the word Brownfield. There is no loss of tax dollars for the city. There's no potential liability here for the city. We are the escrow entity for this grant process. So thank you for clarifying that. And now that the project's approved, let's get it going.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next is request to approve a video service local franchise agreement for Comcast. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. Before you today is a video service local franchise agreement for Comcast. Think of this as the Metro Act for cable, is what this is. So this is, this agreement, you've had one in place with Comcast. These are 10-year agreements. And so the 10 years for the existing one is coming up at the, at the end of this month. And so it's before you, much like the Metro Act. This one also has a very short window of time to act, which we have done. Once it's deemed to be, once their application is deemed to be complete, the city has 30 days to act, to approve or not approve. So we did find it to be complete. We did send the notice, statutory requirement that we sent a notice that we deem it to be complete. And the 30 days would be up as September 23 to, to approve. I took the, the current one, matched it up. It's exactly the same. It's just a renewal. This is where the city gets the 5% fees from Comcast. So this is actually when that actually generates money, unlike the, the other one. So it's, so there's a couple of things. One is, there's a resolution in, well, my letter to Comcast, checking the box, that is, is in your file. And yet, what we're looking for today is to move to approve the resolution. That's in the packet, which That's in the packet, which sets forth essentially the history, the act, and then extends it for 10 more years. So, it's my recommendation to move forward with the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson? Support. Support by Councilmember Gould? Discussion?
Just one question, if I may. So, for the city attorney, why are their contracts always 10 years, though? And what happens if they ever, like, fold?
So, that's the... If they stop using it, there's... If they stop, they have to, you know, it will stop, right? So, they can't... It's very limited, it's by statute how long it would be, it's a standard form that was negotiated, not by us.
Right.
So, it is, you know, with technology changing all the time, you could easily see what you're saying happened, like, there's... There wouldn't be a need for it. But if they stop using it, then they stop using our right-of-way. So, yeah, no, that is one of the things we look at. You know, it could be... You could try to negotiate one on your own, but it's... This is such an easy... Like, people use this, this one. So, I would say, while it probably in the next 10 years, I would expect there to be some changes to, you know, cable is becoming less and less of a thing with the streaming services. So, I think just caught in the timing is theirs was up. So, it'll be interesting to see the next go-around, to see how it looks.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, is there receipt of the check register? Any questions? Onto receive reports from the various boards and committees, at first, report from the Budget and Finance Committee. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, we had a Finance and Budget Committee on September 1, Friday, September 1, and we reviewed the master fee schedule to evaluate the current fees, and a lot of them... Most of them remain the same. Our costs continue to be less than our neighboring cities, that's good news. We discussed moving from NOHAS, which is a quarterly event, when you take your hazardous materials and paints and others to, you know, a specific location, usually at Oakland University. And we discussed changing that to or to the contract we have with SACRA, but that is a $38 voucher that you have to purchase now, because we do have an agreement on that. But we would change that to be less, to go pick up your voucher for a less amount of money, but there will be a fee. We don't know what that is yet. So, that is a time-saving and money-saving for the city and is more flexible for our residents. They can take their hazardous materials to SACRA at any time in a very convenient way, any time... With their hours, which are Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturdays, 7 to 1, and I believe you may have to make an appointment for that. We talked about a project, our park project updates, that we got our two grants, our federal from the feds. One of them was the Memorial Grove that we all know about and Tot Lot, and that is on schedule to be finished in the spring of 2024. So, look forward to ribbon cuttings for that as fall comes in, and we'll be looking forward to the spring. Yeah, and grant updates, and we have Community House at... We will know whether we get that grant on October 2. So, is the update... No?
October 30th, end of the month.
Oh, oops.
October 30th.
Very good.
I got that. Anyway, thank you.
Next is a report of the Principal Shopping District. Mr. Banda?
Ah, so we had a meeting last week and went over the winter, we'll call it winter, the late fall here, schedule. The bright lights start going on here in about 10 days. That's quite a project. You might see some of Dan's guys up on the roof installing the electronics. At this point, new lights came in, we got them off the boat this year early enough, so Christie got everything that she needs. And council will see at the next meeting, Chris Kringle Market, Caroling in the City, things like that. So, no backing down from any events for the winter, in fact. Chris Kringle's become so popular that now it's a... You apply, and then it's kind of juried to see who they pick, so they keep making sure it's relevant, and we get different people and vendors in there, except for the Stroel guy, gotta keep Stroel guy for sure, right? So, there's certain ones that make it all the time. But again, it gives an opportunity for others to check it out. The end of the farmer's market, season's coming up, and they had a successful season with the movies and all that good stuff. So, there was a good meeting, and you'll see the fruits of that meeting at your next meeting when we bring the last round for festival trees, things like that. I know, we also talked about the business development, the X-Post, people still love that thing at the Royal Parks. Royal Park is working again with us, it's basically, I think she only has 40 booths left out of 100 or something, so it's all going well. So, the ladies are in full-on Thunderdome winter mode here, winter holiday mode, so we're excited about that.
Is anything you want, fire and ice?
So, I was with Christie yesterday, we actually did the Bill La Puma Award, not yesterday, but last Thursday, and we were with Mr. La Puma and going over all the people that were nominated for that award. And she kind of said, you want to call Mr. Vanderveen, so we did, and David picked up, and they do not have a commitment at this point. They haven't reached out to him to do it, but we got a call from the Parks and Rec people saying, hey, what's the date? It's like, well, you guys have to tell us you're doing it, we're in for it. So, we're doing our own downtown, you know, the ice glow, the ice glow and the snowman and all that, so we're in for our portion, just give us a date. I don't believe Rewall will be at the point where he would need his land if, in fact, he goes to the planning commission, so I think that site would still be available for one more year. We have an alternate plan, we could go back to the Suavey site or spread them out a little bit on the farmer's market lot, et cetera, if we had to. So, we put the call into the county that we are, we would love to have that, our merchants support that, it's a good moneymaker for that weekend, even though we do our own thing, so as soon as I know, we'll let you know.
So, that's a "Bee-Bee."
Maybe, that's what I was trying to say.
Thank you. Next is a receipt of a report from the OPC. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia?
Yes, so OPC met September 7, that was Thursday, lots of discussion around transit and transportation, but really exciting, September 13, that's this Wednesday, they're having their annual picnic. Everyone is invited, and they will probably be making some branding announcements, revealing some new signage at 1:15. So, if you'd like to see the new sign, if you've driven by the OPC, you see a temporary sign-up, so some new signage coming, so pretty exciting.
Very good. Next, a report from the Planning Commission. I will give that. We approved a temporary trailer situation for Pfizer. They're in the process of expanding some of their products, and they needed to do it very quickly. So, they had this temporary trailer, and then they're going to be looking to build a permanent. And then we had Frank Rewall and Sons came back with a different presentation to the Planning Commission for the building that's going to be office and...
A market and a bar?
Right next to the Frank Rewall Building, and it met with much better approval from the Planning Commission, so we now have a... Set a public hearing for the next meeting in October.
Mayor, and that would not be a special project, so it would not come to council?
That would be a special project. So, it will come to council. So, on to public comment, is there any new public comment? Brian, anything?
There is none, thank you.
All right, Brian, thank you for being there tonight. Onto miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, I've got quite a few things here, actually, so I'll start with, I'll let you all talk about Art and Apples, because I know I saw a lot of you there, so you can talk about that. I just want to thank DPW, Parks, Police, Fire, CERT, everybody that was there. Jeremy and Alec, and I joined them on Sunday, and we did a... Jeremy's like not afraid to hand out stuff, and Alec was right out front as you came in to talk about the Parks Master Plan Visioning Session. So, we were giving out information, inviting people to come to our visioning session, the one at the Community House, and then the one at Elizabeth Park also, so... And then Jeremy had set it up where there's a QR code, people could scan and do the survey. They didn't have to do it right then, but he talked a lot of people into it, I got a few, that we... They clicked on it, and then they could do the survey later to get us the information, so that was pretty cool. So, kudos to those guys for putting in a bunch of hours. We had... The festival went great, Chief George gave us a wrap-up this morning, it went wonderful. We had one incident, unfortunately, somebody drinking at 11:30 in the morning on Sunday, came down Southbound Main to hop the curb and hit two people that were walking from the festival back to their car, dragged the gentleman like 100 feet under the car. If the car hadn't hit the tree, it would have went through La Pumas. So, they're both alive in the hospital, we're keeping tabs on them, and just... And our emergency guys obviously were right there, they had drones flying over there immediately, and the... It's just unfortunate, you can't understand things like that in the middle of the day, why somebody's drinking, but it was handled quickly, and the people that were involved were very thankful that our folks were there, it was not pretty. So, but we'll keep everybody updated on that, keep those folks in our prayers, please. Great news, Chief John today finally got a $10,000 grant for turnout gear for the firemen, so that was the maximum grant you could get. So, he wrote that grant, followed through with it, and we were granted that $10,000 today, which I thought was wonderful. Paving plans are wrapping up, South Castell, tomorrow they're going to mill and fill that last block, be done, pour the collars around the manholes, and then finish the back, filling the landscaping. That punch list will be done this fall, we're not going to push it to spring, so they got the sprinklers all reinstalled, which is the big job, and now they can start putting topsoil back and getting seed and wrap that plant up. I think, Mayor, you're going to be inconvenienced for a couple of days, they have to redo some of the cement work on Terry. I think that's Thursday, they're going to work on that for a couple of days, they have to pour some more concrete, and then that will cure, and then we'll be done over there and wrap that up. The curbs have been marked on the east side, so we talked about that at Budget and Finance, that we... Or Infrastructure, that project will proceed pretty quickly here, so if people see the pink lines, that's where we're removing curbs in three-foot lengths minimum and starting to replace those curves that deteriorated way too quick, but we had to deal with that. Let's see, what's my last one here? That was the grant, the paving plans, Parks Master Plan, and I think that's it.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Newsletter will hit the post office tomorrow, so people should start getting that in the mail this week.
Is there election coming up?
The first two pages are all about...
I'm gonna steal Leanne's last second, can I?
Yeah.
So, Marcy approached me this morning and talked about staff, I'm excited about this. Staff got in a room a couple of times in the last couple of weeks to start talking about budget. How can we smooth this out, get it going, then we had good feedback from Budget and Finance Committee. So, what we'd like to do on October 26, before this regular meeting at 6 o'clock, so we don't have to have another day, is to talk about the SWAT and get that out of the way, because that kind of drives everything that we do going in the goals and objectives. So, if everybody could see, we'll poll you, but just a heads up, we're gonna ask if you can come in for one extra hour, quick, and we'll commit that to get that done, get the SWAT done, and that can drive everything we're doing as we go into the fall, into October, November, December hearing. So, I promise you that I throw that out there, so be looking out for an email from us.
Very good. Anything else, Madam Clerk?
No, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, just two things. One, Arts and Apples was awesome again, and as Mr. City Manager said, thank you to everybody that helped put that on. I think the city really, really shined. I was wondering what all those sirens were for on Sunday, I'm sorry to hear that. The other thing is, as I've been out walking around and speaking to the neighbors, and from firsthand experience, there's a lot of, sounds like drag racing, going on on Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street, and I kept hearing it from... I thought it was maybe just on Main, but my wife got up and saw cars ripping down, and then I keep hearing, I probably heard it from like five residents. And I don't know if y'all have been made aware of that or not, but can I get some spike strips or something to throw down on second before I go to bed? Something?
A lot of them, I'll just interject, a lot of them have been doing it on top of the parking structure, and that's why it echoes through town. But we have had a few, because I've seen them and heard them as well, so I know it's been an issue.
That guy in the under your street said he saw them once ripping down in front of the cemetery there.
Yep.
It's like 2:00 in the morning.
Well, the chief, and I've let the chief know that from Lettica, from Parkdale up to De Quinder, there's a lot of drag racing as well.
That's a curve, that's dangerous.
That's a straightaway, and they fire up and disturb the people at Cedar Brook.
Mr. Ram, I haven't seen a drag race ticket in a while, and I just got one last week, so somebody got... Two gentlemen were given citations for drag racing, I think that one was down University, so... And it wasn't the age group that you might think it was.
Yeah, it was, it's old past.
So, we do have that tool in our toolbox, is what you're saying?
For sure, and you know what, in drag racing, for the, you know, it's a four-point misdemeanor.
Wow.
So, it's worse than a regular speeding ticket, it's a criminal offense, so... It takes a lot for our police to write that one, because it is, but when it does warrant it, they're writing it, so... When they do see it, and they got both of them, so...
Guess the older generation has the money to get the nicer cars. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia?
Yes, so I did just want to comment, speaking of elections, I noticed that the Regional Chamber is having a meet and greet for the Rochester election, that's this Friday, September 15. It starts at 8:45, it ends at 10:30 a.m. We have three current city council members on the ballot, Councilmember Gould, Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Trent, and then there are four, I'll say, challengers. So, if you want to meet the candidates, come out to the OPC this Friday at 9:00 a.m. And then also, just a quick update, SEMCOG hosted a water legislative forum covering two topics that were very timely. These are pieces of legislation that are going through the Michigan Senate currently. One is a potential stormwater utility, so this would allow municipalities to create a stormwater utility, otherwise known as a fee, to cover the cost of maintaining and improving the stormwater system. This would be optional if passed, so Rochester would not have to do one. Detroit has one in place, and the bills are in Congress now. And in general, this is thought that this would be used where municipalities needed significant funds to update a stormwater system. One of the comments that I thought was very significant at the beginning was Jim Nash stated that really municipalities need to keep up with the cost of service by doing regular maintenance, improvements in aligning rates to keep them affordable, which to me is exactly what we've been doing. So, great comment by him. The second legislation that's going through is called the Water Affordability, and there are six bills in the Senate, I could only find one of them, it's Senate Bill 25, to address things like how to avoid shut-off and how to create a statewide funding for aid on water, similar to statewide programs on food and heat. They stated this is not free water, but income-based water. And the funding mechanism would be funded through a $1 to $3 per meter per month charge. So, every meter statewide would have a $36 per year charge to cover this. Both of those are in the Senate. That's all my breaking news on that, and again, just wanted to thank everyone for Arts...
That's very depressing.
I know. Not necessarily good news, I, you know, water's important, but that's a hefty charge on all of us. So, thanks for Arts and Apples, it was a beautiful weekend, it's great to see three sunny days for Arts and Apples. That's rare, three sunny days.
Councilmember Albrecht?
And three days that it wasn't 90 degrees like last year. I just wanted to echo the mayor opened the meeting talking about 9/11 and never forgetting, and I just wanted to commend the fire chief, the mayor who spoke at our ceremony earlier tonight, always our police color guard, taking down the normal US flag and then putting up the flag that was flown over the memorial in New York City. Every year, I haven't missed this, and it's just such a somber event, and we will never forget, and again, I thank everybody who participated in that today. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I'll just pile on with Art and Apples, it was three beautiful days, I don't think that's happened in, I don't know, ages. don't think that's happened in, I don't know, ages. And beside, and, you know, and I always want to thank the people who make it work, the hundreds of volunteers, several hundred volunteers, and all the work that the Pink Creek Center for the Arts does. It is the major fundraiser for Pink Creek Center for the Arts. And I know when I was there and I talked to a few of the vendors, they said it was excellent. People were buying from them quite a bit of artwork and jewelry. So, yes, and Parks, and Police, and DPW, and CERT, Fire, excellent, excellent team work to make this wonderful event continue to happen. So, I have been talking to people as well, and the, and so the absentee ballot application went out September 1, and it was right on time. But, people are, they're telling me they thought it was the ballot. So, I just want to make clear that they, some of them, oh, they're always, they say, I already voted. Okay, so, anyway, it's an application. I was thinking, once they opened it and started filling it out, maybe then?
But you, you can apply for lifetime absentee ballot sent to you.
Correct.
Except the primary coming up.
Okay. Okay, good. Well, I'll have to look, okay, good. That's good to know. And the other one thing is Parks, and there was questions about the Parks Master Plan, believe it or not. And how is public input, is it going to be a big meeting, or vision meeting, or what, what is happening with this?
Jeremy, you want to quote? He's headbanding this, I think he can just rip off the top of his head here, so.
Okay, I just want to get the right information, so when I'm talking to someone.
Yep.
Welcome, Jeremy.
Hello, council. How is everybody doing tonight?
Good.
So, we have a survey online that we're doing. Then we do have the stakeholder meeting that is tomorrow for, that's invite only for the stakeholders in the area. And then we do have a visioning session on the 23rd, Saturday, at noon to 3:00 at Elizabeth Park. So, those are the three avenues that people can put their input on, and I would direct them to the website on, and it's the surveys online.
And then the next step, it goes to Planning Commission for public hearing, so we'll have much more time to do that and bring it here also, so.
So, the vision session at Elizabeth Park, is that just, is that open to the public?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's one. And then the three.
You're hanging out those applications.
As long as it doesn't rain, or, or just bring your umbrella?
A tent.
Oh, okay.
A tent.
Okay.
Everybody crowded.
Wow, wonderful.
And, and so those QR codes, are those going to be out there and available in the parks?
I could.
Yeah, we hadn't planned on it.
We hadn't planned on that.
We were just up north a week or so ago, and they had their master plan QR code, and you know I clicked on it, and, you know, everyone's wondering, you know, why, why am I submitting? But, people do click on them.
Yeah, I can get something made up this week, and that should be the issue.
Put it in the parks, the users of the parks, get their feedback.
I can do the, I had a big poster board, and I can just laminate it or get a waterproof one and put it up in the park. Me and Nick can work on a placement for that, for sure.
True.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, I also was on that call with Nancy regarding the infrastructure waters thing, and it's quite alarming, too, quite a lot of different things. But, I actually came back from, I was in Lansing today, and we were actually speaking regarding the stormwater utilities at the Michigan Realtors. And that is something that we've been opposed to in the past as an association, because it does infringe on the rights of commercial properties, and this would be very costly. That's why there's so many issues in Detroit right now. But, that, and having that tax on everybody, just is something that, isn't something that we're looking forward to ever supporting, unless they make changes. Also, wanted to bring up, there's other legislation, if people are interested, Senate Bill 329 and House Bill 4681. There's a bad faith in insurance claims bill that's going through, because so many people, it's really causing insurance to go up. And right before this passed in the state of Florida, 250,000 lawsuits were put into, were submitted prior to this law going in, because they wanted to be able to have litigation. So, the, it's staggering out of the insurance claims, out of $50 billion, only 8% went to the people who needed the claim. Everything else went to the trial attorneys, et cetera. So, it's, it's been turned, they're turning it into a business which nobody wants. Then, there is discussion that's coming from Mayor Dugan out of Detroit for the value, a land value tax right now that he wants to place on any vacant land. And I'm going to send all these to you, so you both can look at them, because in the discussion, there is, like, there's a list, they said, like, he has, like, some people that he would like to, you know, impose a tax, so they actually do something with the properties, okay?
Great.
However, you know, we have properties here, we would, you know, when you think about the vacant land, you know, increase the tax, so then it will be incentivize them to, instead of paying that tax, get it built and be different. But, that's, that's coming, that'll be coming out, and it's neutral on that. And the other one is, there's a new one as well, real estate transfer tax. They want to, they envision a tax credit program like proposed in the, in the past with the Neighborhood Homes and Investment Act in Congress. So, right now, we're working with Mishda to not have another additional tax as a property tax for real estate on any transfers, because they want it into a pool to go ahead and just collect for future assistance to other people. So, that would be, that's just another tax. I mean, between Nancy and I, we've taxed everybody tonight.
Yeah, I got a bad reason.
And, and because right now, there are two people at the state legislature who are running for mayor offices, if they do end up in November being elected, it's going to change the dynamics, and then the, they are going to go into signee die at the state, which means that you have to wait 90 days before you can go into, bring anything forward. So, they're not anticipating any real true activity legislative-wise from after the election to the new year. So, it's going to be very slow. We were told most, a lot of things are not going to come out of that.
Is that, is that a bad thing?
Um, well, it depends, because the only thing that we've been told that's most important that's going to be worked on is everything that's in the, was in the governor's what's next address that took place. Also, that Renters' Bill of Rights is out there, getting a lot of activity and a lot of, trying to get a lot of changes made to that to make it fair. Short-term rental regulation is back on the books, too. So, it's not looking promising at the moment, but because of the timing of everything, it might not be pushed through. And then, let's just see what other, the other, oh, and now on stormwater utilities, though. Did I just talk, no, I didn't talk about that one. Stormwater utilities, that's where, that's, that's going to continue being opposed. I think, yeah, I did just to tell you that. And then, I think those are the major, major points. Next, I want to just say, I was at the State of the City for Rochester Hills, and I called Nick the next day and told him I was moving. It was just, it was a really fun event. There's a lot of things going on. I was very impressed that the city of Rochester Hills truly, they have $75 million in brownfield money that was given to them from the state. And I think, I think what we need to do is, we really need to work with any of the undeveloped land with the developers and that need any of that cleanup work. Get projects together, submit them in, and see what we can do to get that money to. But, it was very well-attended. I thought it was a great event, and a lot of positive going on, which, you know, I think we help with that whole positivity that they, they get to live with. And then, since there was the discussion regarding the safety of people walking and that, SEMCOG put, has together, put together the Walk Bike Drive Safe Campaign. It's on SEMCOG's thing. We can get a whole bunch of information. They've already, have it all ready to go. I think it's worth looking into now because of everything that's been happening, and we are, we have so much more traffic now, I mean, walkable traffic, too, that I think that, I think we need to take steps to ensure more, better safety, no matter what it's going to take. And then, and then school, oh, and the Park Master Plan. So, no, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate what everybody said about Art and Apples. The city fire police, or DPW did a great job. They were really out in force on the weekend, so we appreciate that. And, you know, somebody who's lived in Rochester a long time, I mean, it really is amazing how big Art and Apples has become. It is a southeastern Michigan event, and really, that shows, you know, the growth and popularity of our city in, in that event. So, it was, it was really crowded. I was there Sunday afternoon. It was absolutely packed.
With your dad.
With my father, right, pushing around and...
Did he have a good time?
Yeah, he had a very nice time, and everybody was super polite, and it was very crowded. So, with that, without that due, thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned. Good night.